Spelled the same.
Spelled the same, and I said Katie, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and then myself in attendance. First item on the agenda is number one, public comments. See any in the room? And it does not appear there.
I know that there are people here that are for the presentation all of it.
Okay.
They're on the screen, yes.
On item two on the agenda is finance treasurer's report. It says on the agenda that it was to be posted, but it is in the packet. I need a motion to accept that report. Second. Any discussion?
I know.
All those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Right, item three on the agenda was added in the amended agenda. Early education program proposal.
Megan was gonna try to join us. I don't see her. Yet. Wondering if she's having. Maybe not. So I know that you have the proposal in front of you. In the pack, do you have it in the packet?
Yeah.
I'll give you a minute to take a look.
Are you able to answer the questions that might be?
I I'm going to, I'm going to make an attempt. I think she's having trouble getting on. So, but I can make an attempt, and Renee's here. I know that Megan worked closely with our director of HR, Nick Gault, and our director of finance. Oh, look at just like that. Thanks for your patience. Megan, can you hear us? There, we did it. So Megan, perfect timing.
Hi.
Okay, so Megan is here. Questions for Megan?
I was curious. It doesn't give a number that this new parent is going to support number of children or what the ratio is teacher to student. I was just curious on that.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Um, the, uh, to be perfectly honest with you, our ratio by childcare licensing is 10 to 1. So once I have a classroom that has more than 10 students, I'm required to have an additional staff person. Um, ratio best practice for preschool is 8 to 1. What I'm actually running into this year on, which has been really different than past years, is all of our classrooms are set up with 50% of the students receiving IEP services. And of the 50% of the students in each classroom, usually one or two require one-to-one assistance. We're in a situation where we have classrooms where, um, at times, three children require one-to-one assistance for safety. So we're in a sticky situation where sometimes we might have. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Are we okay? Um. So the, um, yeah, so we're in a situation where sometimes because of the number of kids in the classroom, we may or may not have that extra person to account for the kids that aren't needing one-to-one attention, if that makes sense.
So how many students do you have for the five classrooms?
Uh, currently, we have, uh, 49.
And how many? How many teachers and parents, how many adults do you have?
Yeah, no, that's fine. So the way that our classrooms are staffed currently is that I have five classrooms. Um, three of them are at Division Street, and those are a little bit smaller. Um, in numbers, those are, um, somewhere between nine and 11, um, depending on the size of the room. We're also limited on how many students we can have in a classroom based on licensing regulations for square footage. Unfortunately, sometimes, um, you know, for that building, it made more, we have three smaller classrooms. At Molly Stark, we have two larger classrooms, each have 12 students in them. Um, and so the way that we're staffed currently, we have, uh, three paraeducators and a teacher in all of our classrooms at Molly Stark. And then we have two paraeducators and a teacher at all of our classrooms at Division Street. What this would allow us to do is have somebody who would be available, um, in order to ensure that the staffing is enough when students, um, when folks are rotating or, um, because they have to take a break. So we have to cover everybody under ratio during those times as well as, um, other things that they have to leave the classroom to do. So that leaves the classroom shorter person when the paraeducator has to leave the classroom for other like tasks that they have to complete throughout their day.
So if I understand you correctly, in one school, you have four adults, two classrooms, six and, or 12 in each room?
Yes.
Okay, so that is.
In those classrooms, three children in each of those classrooms were, two or three children at, uh, require one-to-one attention.
Okay, so you have two adults for 10 children, then, is that correct? I I just.
Yeah, yeah, and we need, and we need two adults for 10 children, yes, yes.
Okay, so am I, if I understand, then it, this would be possibly for the other building? When you have three adults for the nine children, nine to 11 children?
Yes, I mean, I think, I, I, we don't specify the, the building, but yes, adding to the number of people, we might move some people around that, yeah. The actual person might not go to Division Street, but yes. There is, there is three classrooms and six adults right now. Does that make sense?
No, but please let me process this because I'm still confused.
I'd like to hear about what's happening to the OT needs that are part of the IEPs now and.
Yeah.
What we do as they have the potential to grow.
Yeah, so currently, we have everything covered. Um, I think we, we have a contractor who has a fairly flexible schedule. Um, and in the number of hours that she's able to give us over the course of the school year, we anticipate that we should be able to meet all of the needs. Last year, when we proposed, I, you know, I kind of said to Renee, I think I don't need somebody full-time. So let's go with what a half-year contract would be, like a dollar amount that a half-time contract would be for the whole school year. You know, it's a little bit, it was a little bit of a guess. And it seems that what we're tracking, we should be on track to meet all of the needs. The IP needs.
Is compliance is met?
I wish that I could see, you know, I wish I had something to actually, this is 60, it could be $60,000. And, and I can't really tell if we need it or we don't need it. It sounds like we're adding it, but we didn't need it for compliance, because if we did, then we would have it. Does that make sense? So I guess that's, I, I guess it's.
Are you?
I'm having a hard time understanding the ratios.
Those are complicated.
Um, quick question.
Yeah.
If you're, you know, one to 10 in the room, do you actually have those people in the room all the time to get to maintain a ratio in their room? It's not in the building?
Yeah.
So if somebody goes out of the back, you need to have somebody step in?
I just exceeded that. Now it's two or three, of course, ones and one-on-one, so I just subtracted them out.
Yeah, you, yeah, you do have to, you do have to subtract the one-to-ones, um. Yes, because they're really there, and specifically when the student that they're with has a high level of safety need, you know, that's, that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. And then, yes, you do need, you do have to take into account if people have to leave the room.
I guess my, I'll ask this question. Is this going to be a planned position for next year as well? Looking forward, because, you know, we have to start thinking about next year's budget now.
Yeah, no.
And to say that heavy next year because we lost a lot of asset funds.
Yes.
So we're gonna be looking at potential cuts next year.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I mean, that, that's kind of my concern.
I think that, um.
Can't see that you can't tell the future, so that's.
No, I know, it's super hard to predict the future. It's super hard to predict the future. Um. I, you know, what we're seeing is a, an incredibly high level of, um, self-regulation need in our preschoolers. And also what I'm seeing is that, um, many other students are, many of these students are not really capable of being successful in other environments. Um, so we're getting students who are ostensibly getting expelled from preschool and other settings and having to meet those needs. And so I do anticipate, you know, we're to say automatically right now, oh, it's fine, I can go without it next year, I think would be a little short-sighted. But I 100% appreciate that we need to consider where else we can save money. If, in fact, the number of bodies and keeping kids safe is the most important thing.
So in the need, it's, your need is asking to maintain the appropriate adult-to-child ratios. And if I understand you correctly, that's not really the need. You already had that need met.
Not if they.
What you're hoping for is to get additional support for challenging behaviors.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess it's six one way, half a dozen another. People are getting pulled away to deal with challenging behaviors in one-on-one and sometimes two-in-one scenarios, which then takes away from being able to maintain the appropriate child ratio.
Did I also hear if somebody needs to leave the room? Or
Take a break.
You don't have the coverage that's needed.
No, not, not all the.
The adults in the room, but you don't have as good as what it could be. If I understand it correctly.
No, I mean, I don't have the coverage, yeah.
One-on-one, they have to be one-on-one.
Yeah.
There's a crisis, staff are pulling you towards the crisis. Have these.
So we could have a classroom as small as nine kids. If I have a teacher and two paraeducators, and two of those paraeducators are one-on-ones that have to be with children that need somebody with them. And I then have a teacher, you know, who is by themselves ostensibly. And if something else happens, we do sometimes need another adult in order to, to meet those needs. And there are other ways, like, you know, there's obviously other people we can flag down from the hallway and, and, and help out. But it's really putting a lot of these classrooms who then have maybe, you know, two kids who are, have one-on-ones on their IEPs, and then another challenging situation with another challenging student who maybe we're not sure, uh, how much need they're going to have, or we haven't gone through the process of, you know, identifying all of their needs yet. And so that's a lot of what we're dealing with right now, is a lot of students who are really dysregulated. Many of them have, you know, autism diagnoses. Some of them are just also maybe going through that process of understanding and what their diagnosis is. You know, when I think about some of the safety concerns that we have, they're on par with some of the safety concerns we see in the NAC program. Self-injurious behaviors, um, really explosive targeted behaviors towards peers and adults. Like, these are the kinds of things that we're really trying to keep kids safe and redirect and help prevent, in order, in order for students to be able to participate in school.
Megan, are you at liberty to share how many staff you've lost because of this issue?
Uh, I haven't, it, I haven't, I don't, I haven't had a reduction in staff.
So in the, in this autism, they haven't been identified, or are they?
Well, some kids, yes, and some kids are still young and going through the process.
Is it closer to a one than a five in the autism?
Uh, usually it's a three-level designation, and we're seeing a lot of students level two and above, yeah.
It, to me, it seems important that we get.
Yeah.
This is the time to address these things and give the resources that are needed, because it's not going to get any better as these, as these kiddos move through the system.
And, and you already answered the question I have about those one-on-ones that you currently have in place. It's not just great to have those extra staff going to help out with those one-on-ones. There's actually written into their IEP.
Yes, students do have.
They can't be. You have to follow the law to, to meet those IEP criteria.
Yes, and it is, you know, like I said, there's, there are situations in every school building where there's extra adults who are there to help out, and that's incredibly important. But we all know that, you know, when you're dealing with students with really challenging behavior, having a trained person who's following a specific plan throughout a child's day is going to be the most effective than me running down the hallway and saying, oh, I can help, I can help, um, you know, I will. And so it's not that there isn't sometimes a person who can step in. But to be most appropriately staffed and most appropriately planning for everybody's needs, we really need this, you know, additional set of hands to ensure that the program is running effectively.
And is any part of this, Megan, reimbursable?
I mean, we do, I mean, I do, we do bill Medicaid. I mean, I, I don't, you know, that's the only reimbursement.
Well, because it's part of the financial impact?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I mean, yeah, so those are, yeah, so those are, like, if one-on-one service support is on a child's IEP, I, I, I know that that's Medicaid billable.
Thank you.
So I, we need a motion to approve the.
I'll second second.
Any discussion? Further discussion?
I just want to small talk, like, uh, going into budget season, it sounds like, um, Sandy kind of wants more numbers in front of her so she can really, you know, look at it and see what's there versus trying to. Get it on her head, yes. So, you know, that's just moving forward, like, budget season, if you say, you know, class and babies are voting one, voting two, is what we're looking at, just to have an overall picture.
And I will just also add that, um, a handful, so our parapositions are funded in a lot of different ways. Not all of my para-position funding is in the local budget. Some of it is coming through Medicaid and other grants. Um, so, so that's, I think, the other thing that, you know, right now, we're just using the money we can find in the budget, but I think we can also think about how we structure it moving forward.
And honestly, Megan, it's just because it said it was locally funded that I feel like I just need to know a little more, so thank you.
Any further discussion? In favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, uh, item four on the agenda is policies. We have, uh, two policies adopted tonight. Number 4001, preventing and responding to unlawful harassment of employees and third parties. And number 6100, library material selection. Um, I was a little confused when I was looking through the packet because they both said that they were adopted.
I was told, I was, I was just told that they're on here because it looked like they weren't adopted, so this is your, I guess there must have been discussion at your last meeting, so they never.
There was on library material.
So that they still needed to be adopted was what I was advised, that's why they're still there.
Is there any feedback from the policy committee? Because to Jeff's point, the policy that was warned for library material selection was not the same verbiage as the one that was on for adoption. So is anyone here on the policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of.
Three of us.
Three of us, yeah.
That's why we. The one that we, you know, adopted or warned, I guess, um, it was that seven-page, so it had that front page that's on there now. And then it had all the, you know, this is how you fix books, this is the media specialist.
The admin regs.
Test it.
It was it, so what you.
The admin regs.
Yeah, so what you have tonight is the actual policy, and what will follow after is an, an update to the admin regs. I think is probably what happened, yes.
And that's why it was funny, because they had all the admin regs first. So the policy that we warned once ago, or was that, you know, you know, policy with the admin regs? So that's very.
You're talking about 6100, right?
6100, yeah. You know, that's only hold up, because we had the admin regs before, which was, we warned it as a policy with the admin regs. So taking those out really does change it.
Okay, so tonight, you've got your.
The admin regs will come further on.
Okay, and is there any discussion on 4001? Okay, so I think we should move them separately. So can I have a motion to move 4001, preventing and responding to unlawful harassment of employees and third parties as presented in the packet? By Crystal, second by Glenn, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, moving on to 6100, library material selection. Need a motion to adopt that.
Motion.
Um, motion made by Jeff, seconded by Sandy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, uh, item five on the agenda is the consent agenda. Minutes, warrants, leave of absence, retirements, resignations, and nominations. Nobody has any objections. Uh, I'd like to move those as one.
I'll make a motion to.
Motion made by Nicole, seconded by Glenn, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstentions? Right, item six, superintendent's report. Standing in for Superintendent Colkey as Assistant Superintendent.
I'm here.
For.
I'm here with friends. Uh, so, um, I'm here, I'll introduce them right now. I have, uh, Jessa Ordway, uh, with us, and Val Hope, who are, are two social-emotional behavior coaches that are going to be a part of this piece. So this evening, you'll have the opportunity to listen to a presentation that will share updated social-emotional and behavior-related community data linked to the district's new continuous improvement plan goals that are in effect from 2024 to 2027, and in alignment with the SVSU policy, um, 6,000 curriculum. The minutes from this presentation will be shared publicly on our website after this meeting to ensure that the board and the public watching have an opportunity to get to together, learn about the process tools and data result format, and to avoid misconceptions as a common understanding is created. At the conclusion of the presentation, questions can be directed to myself for the board chair. Uh, if there are no further questions that arise, if there are further questions after the meeting, please reach out to the superintendent or the board chair, who will plan for future agenda items for you. So we're, um, oh, I'm sorry, you can't, if you're doing people, it's out, you gotta drive.
I have to drive.
You have to drive.
I can't talk.
You can't talk.
Talk, I could drive, I can't talk.
There you go. All right. Bye. So I, to, to start, uh, our focus, and to prepare you for, as you said earlier, budget season, is to start to think about the, the social-emotional lens. And so that's going to be our focus of this, uh, presentation tonight. So as you take a look at our first slide here, uh, the social-emotional learning and behavioral goals that we're going to be talking about tonight have a lot of acronyms. So to make this very clear, uh, for non-educational, um, professionals, we included a little decoding thesaurus here, uh, dictionary. So MTSS is our multi-tiered system of support. Our CIP is our continuous improvement plan. SS, SRSSIE is our student risk screening scale, which we give to all students three times a year. Uh, internalizing behaviors screener and externalizing behaviors screener are two components of the SSRSIE that we give three times a year. Internalizing are things like anxiety or depression. Externalizing are things like observable behaviors, like behavior problems or, uh, negative attitude or cheating. Treatment Integrity Social Validity Survey is a measure that we give twice a year that is used to measure how well we implement our, um, behavioral tools and our MTSS plan. And that is, uh, again, given twice a year to say, how well are we doing in our implementation? So our new social-emotional goal for the district is goal number one.
All right. Quick question, that's to all students and all grades?
Yes, and really, much of these are given actually to the teachers and the teachers rate. So these, uh, the tools are assessed by teachers to say, how many children in your class are internal, have high, medium, or low risk for internalizing? How many children in your class are high, medium, and low risk for externalizing? So it's not given, the children don't sit down and take a test, the teachers rate based on what they see in their class. And then the teachers themselves take the, um, fidelity measure. We can, we can do more of this right when we finish. We can come back and talk about these because we actually have some experts in the, in the room.
All right.
Uh, so our goal one for Safe and Healthy this year, which we shared with you all, and it has been officially approved by the state. So this is the, our official goal, uh, language, is that by June 2027, schools will have a high fidelity rate, that's 80% or higher. So those are, this is, this is all staff filling out the Treatment Integrity Social Validity. That means that we're hoping that by 2027, 80% feel that the universal things we're doing are, that they feel like are working. And at least 70% of our students will be responding successfully to low-risk primary prevention efforts um, as we measure the SRSSIE. So for, so how are we doing? So remember, this is the first time we're going to talk about how are we doing in relationship to this goal. So we know that in the spring, so for the second, the second time we gave this particular assessment, 81%, SVS schools have a high fidelity rate of 81% of universal implementation, so which is exciting. Um, so we're going to want to reconsider this goal down the road. And then our second goal, we have 58% of students who are responding successfully currently for the low-risk and primary prevention efforts. And our goal, remember there, is that we're hoping that 70%. So our goal is we want to get to that 70%. So we're well along our way in terms of the percentage of students who are responding successfully to our primary prevention efforts. Our second goal is all-around making sure, and it's actually, having a multi-tiered system of support is actually in statute, it's law. So we are proud to say that our goal is to make sure that we have a documented system for all three tiers, which is something we're always working on. And in this moment, um, we have already submitted our district-tiered system, um, and all of our school systems. So they're all in place. So the strategies that we're focused on now, so we have a number of strategies that we're implementing each year. And one strategy is that four times a year minimally, our district at school level MTSS teams will be reviewing the data to say, how are we doing towards our goals? Another strategy is to review and, um, update instructional and intervention strategies to support specifically internalizing behaviors, our focus. And then to identify and implement progress monitoring tools for tiered social-emotional behavioral instruction and intervention of strategies as per the MTSS, um, plans. So our next slide, um, is, so as the homeless liaison, I'm responsible for, um, keeping track of the intakes that we complete. And so I've been reporting out to you at this meeting annually. Um, and so as you can see, um, the period of time for this year, 24, 25, is August through September 20th. And, um, so far, I've done 76 intakes. And last year, between August and October 6th, we had done 59.
Is that new to this year? Is that 79 new for much?
Yes, yeah, that's right, 76, so sometimes.
So we had the ones from last year and you added.
No, so this is, we, I, what I, what I report up to this board every year, and actually the other boards as well, is how many intakes I've completed compared to the time last year. Homeless is a moving target number. So this, at this point in time this year, I've had 76 requests for intakes.
And last year?
Thank you. So I. So I just-
As well with the-
And so that is the second statement that's there, so last year, or last year, last week, last week, it's actually been a very emotional time, I have to say. So this was shared with us last week from my, the state homeless liaison that partners with all of us, and so this was sent to all school districts. And, and so as of September fifteenth, the number of motel rooms that can be used for emergency, for the emergency housing program was reduced to one thousand one hundred rooms as required in Act one thirteen. Households with a child under the age of nineteen are included in the high-risk category that will be prioritized for continued housing in the program beyond nine fifteen. However, the maximum number of days that an eligible household can receive emergency housing in a hotel or motel in a twelve-month period cannot exceed eighty days. Current projections show that two hundred and ninety-one households, which include a hundred and sixty-one children, will exhaust their eighty-nines starting last week.
Is that-
And we are feeling that.
Statewide?
Yes, this came, this is statewide, so I will let you know it has impacted us as a community in the last week. So what I want to, I want to talk about, I saw, I want, we want to continue to give you the last few pieces of information, and then talk about what we're doing to support, because we know this topic raises lots of questions, so keep track of the questions that you have, and we can go back through this, and we can also come back and visit. So, Kate, do you want to highlight, Lindsay had to leave.
Oh, okay, yeah, no problem.
She was here, she had to go.
Sure, so, so basically, our next slide talks a little bit about tier one support, so tier one is what every child receives that just walks through the door. Tier one supports our first and primary prevention efforts to make sure everyone has high-quality instruction in social-emotional skills and behavior. So when you take a look at this slide, what you'll notice is everything in the regular font is, are things that we have been implementing, that we're continuing to implement with fidelity, and that we're building our capacity on. Everything in the yellow, in the highlight, you'll see that we have some new tools, so Second Step, School Connect, actually, in Arlington Memorial High School is a new tool that they're building on. And then in the yellow, you'll see Project Aware highlighted, these are our funding sources for this year, as you know, last year our S R funded ended, our S R funding ended. So we had to find, if we were going to continue some of these initiatives, we had to find funding opportunities. So Lindsay Heller, who is our Project Aware coordinator, was going to be here tonight, but isn't able to, so I'll talk just briefly. We were selected under, for a mental health grant titled Project Aware to help our suicide prevention efforts. And Project Aware is allowing us to expand upon some of our tools to screen and connect children with mental health services and supports. So as you'll see in the highlighted slide here, Second Step, and specifically, we're building on Second Step to add a digital resource, is being allowed to be funded through Project Aware, as well as in all of our K-three, fourth, four through five middle school and high school. And the goal of that, again, is, as well as restorative practices and conscious discipline, to reduce the amount of suicidality amongst our youth.
And, and again, continuing on, because again, we've, the good news is, we've been sharing this information with you now multiple years, so we're able to now highlight where we're making subtle changes, and so our professional learning, also, we're staying focused on what we've started, and as we shared some of that initial data with you, including that homeless data, what we're doing to support professional learning is super important. And so I have Jessa Ordway and Val Hope here tonight, and I want, I'm so super thankful for their services, and they're part of Title Four, so they're funded through a grant that we receive, and they're available district-wide. So Jessa, my one question for you is, how can a social-emotional coach support a new teacher or a leadership team? Especially if they might have a child experiencing homelessness and some current trauma, maybe because of their housing situation?
Sure, so our goal is to work both with classroom teachers, to help them implement universal strategies, so best practices in, you know, responding to behavior, and effective classroom management, as well as integrating social-emotional learning into practice. So that could be observing classrooms, offering feedback, modeling, you know, doing work right alongside them, to kind of show them how, how this can be done in the framework that we have provided. A lot of times, it's like an extra I, like people are like, I think I'm doing this right, but I just want some feedback on, on, you know, how that's going. So we provide a lot of those opportunities, we can sit and problem solve. Do a lot of looking at data to kind of help inform our decisions. We also do the same thing with leadership teams, so every school has an implementation manual, we sit and use our data as a district to kind of update our district manual, that then kind of goes into schools to update theirs, so any of the strategies that are listed under the F E L or behavior components of those documents are things that we can provide some extra coaching support on, or have some knowledge of, and can link teachers to extra support, so we know that it takes a village to wrap around our community to support them, and so we're an extra support, and we also help them ask the right questions and start linking them to extra supports in, in our buildings as well.
And Val, so again, I'll use my little example, we have a child experiencing some homelessness and is struggling in school, and we want to support teachers. How have we offered trauma training to all staff so far this year?
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's a timely question. We had our first professional learning half-day district-wide, so K through twelve, and we provided professional learning on trauma-informed practices in almost all of the schools, so no school, high school, Monument, Wallingstark, Huntington Elementary, focused on trauma-informed practices, Arlington, Fisher Memorial High School did as well, they focused on integrating regulation skills. And then for Pownell Elementary in Shrewsbury, they focused on how to embed social-emotional learning into academics. And Woodford focused on compass points. So providing training and allowing our colleagues to see, to see us as trainers, so that they know we have training available and support available in-house, was the immediate feedback that we all received at the school today, that they were really happy to know who to contact in their building, who can support them.
Thank you very much. And then the last few slides, as we do now annually, is we are, we're just going to slowly, Kate's going to slowly screen through, but this, again, to think about for budget season, this is the list of social-emotional and behavior staffing patterns at this point in time. This will also be shared at individual board meetings. Again, to help with budget season. What we did do, and you know, Jeff, thank you for bringing that up earlier, like we do need to highlight where funding has shifted, and how we've brought on other grants, which we have been doing, and we're thankful for Project Aware. There is also, I would point out, big picture, we received a grant so that now the drug and alcohol prevention coordinator can be at the high school one day a week, that's huge. We haven't had that before, well, we have, it's just been a while since it's been placed at the high school. So those are just a few things that we wanted to highlight. And so I appreciate you, I thank you for waiting so we could get through the different pieces. And Scott, I'll turn it over to, if there are any questions for us about this particular, and again, if questions come up after, we can also, you can share them with the chair, we're happy to come back, because I know at least lots of questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
You first.
Basically, the restorative practices training was offered to teachers, support personnel, either or, or both?
Today's, it was, today it was offered to teachers and professional support staff. There was plans, if it has not been offered to paraprofessional staff, there is time within the special learning calendar this year.
Universal language to be the role model of the best certified training.
Important.
And we have offered some of that in our coaching capacity at, at the school level. It just hasn't been a district-wide thing, so.
And, and in October, through our partnership with Up For Learning, which is from the Project Aware grant, they're offering restorative practices training for all SVSU staff for free. So that's been shared out with all staff.
Other questions for us?
One for you, Scott, I'm hoping that in the future, when we get packets, we could have them in advance, so that I can redo them, I feel it's a disservice to those who are here that I don't have an opportunity to look it over before they're presenting, so I feel like I'm trying to read it while people are actually presenting, and I just feel it's disrespectful to you. So I'm asking that we have this in advance, Scott.
So I would just like to, and I, I thank for the comment. Certain presentations are going to probably be done, especially if they have data, just to make sure, as we said in the beginning, so that we're addressing, we want to make sure that the community and the people here get the information, we are happy to come back. Similar to the Agency of Education came yesterday and spent time with us, they did the presentation and said, well, welcome to come back, and we didn't have it, so presentations, I, so anything we can, especially if you're going to need it for a work session, we're going to try to make sure that you have that. But we are happy to come back, and they are very happy to come back. So we totally understand we're provoking questions.
Question. Would you do these, what we're looking at here, these lists of personnel at each individual school, if you do that in a way that it's easy to prepare?
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, I, the lines switch around some-
Absolutely, yep.
Might be easier.
Especially during budget season, we can actually redo it for you, so you can have it to look at.
To have a, you know, an access, you know,
Absolutely.
Horizontal, distributed number.
Is it possible to get job descriptions to go along with the job title, so that we have the plus of this in-
When you get into budget season, would that be helpful? Yeah, I also know, yeah, I also know they were working on, so this has come up, because if you look at some of the titles, we get lots of questions now, like what is a registered behavior technician, that would be one of the big ones. So we're working on definitions and resources that we can find on the website to help you as well, so I appreciate that comment, support on that.
Also, even background training, because you know, there's some coaches that are, you know, certified, have more alcohol training, and you have some coaches who just seem like they've been taught on the job.
Yes.
Well, and I was wondering that too, about where you have trauma therapists?
Yes.
Is that an actual licensed clinician, or, because it wasn't counted in with the school-based clinicians?
Correct.
And it was separate from that, and I wasn't sure if that was a funding thing, or if that was-
I can't-
Because they weren't actually licensed clinicians, it was under a different type of criteria in training?
Yep. So I, so the trauma therapist is actually funded out of Title Four, and specific just to two schools, so you're right, it is linked to a funding source. And that is, when we get into Title Four, there's specific language that you have to use with, with the grant, so I have allowable uses, so some of that is terminology related to the grant. But can I ask that, I heard a couple of great suggestions that would help with budget season, is having in advance, I heard in advance, having the staffing pattern put more on like a chart, so it's easy to read, and then I also heard you say definitions, and really having a more job description. Yep, okay, great, thank you.
And training.
And training, and like what they, and what their training is, Jeff?
I mean, I think just their background, because you know, you can look at a nurse, know a nurse went to
Yeah.
School, they got certified, they passed state boards, you know, what's the difference between a, you know, therapist, what's their training versus a behavioral therapist? And just kind of what's their background, because I think some of these coaches are, you know, what qualifies to be a coach? What's, what's your training expertise? Because some coaches have less training than teachers.
So I will make sure that we meet with the margin and resource director to see what we can come up to help you with during budget season, so thank you for that.
Seems like there is a third category, funding source.
I will make, so I, I hear, I, I think what I'm hearing that would be helpful for your work sessions is the chart, yeah.
Seems like you could aggregate the numbers for persons in a particular category, and identify their, their training and background. And also the funding sources.
Okay, great.
One last one, if I can, and I'll probably just go to Christel, Katie, when I hear therapy, I think licensure.
And that's not always the case.
That's why I bring it up.
Right, so like, no, so you would also like to know if there's a specific license attached to that as well?
Well, that's going to be on a personal basis, personnel basis.
Well, I'm also thinking, the Agency of Education has licenses, a licensing document as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, you go on, you can go on the website and say, you know, is this nurse certified?
Yeah.
No, I didn't mean personnel in terms of privacy, I meant that's specific to individuals, that's, that's all I think.
It's, it's public knowledge.
Individual personnel.
Yeah, it's public knowledge.
If you're saying you're a therapist, what type of therapist, you're a licensed, state licensed certified therapist?
Are we talking about psychotherapy or hopping?
What's your education background training that makes you experienced?
I have a question about the behavioral interventionist, if a school doesn't have one, it means they don't need one, or they didn't ask for one? So that's a great question, I can't answer that here, but that's a great question, I can take that. And Sandy, when we get to the individual board meetings, like we actually get to SVU, I can prepare for that, at this moment, I'm not prepared to answer that. Some of them, I, I do know are historical positions, but they, I know they are based on need, but I would like, I would rather take your question back and get you a good answer, especially when we get closer to your individual board meetings. That's a good question. I have one more thing. I have one more thing, that's okay? The other thing that annually I have to do is report out to all of you that, all, the high schools tomorrow night, that I've completed all, I've completed nine out of ten of the required school-wide title meetings at all the schools. We had two hundred and twenty-four families as of today that attended the title meetings at the schools. Each agenda included items that highlighted the school family compact, encouragement to request student progress information to support decision-making, parents' rights linked to Title One, school-level goals, open discussion to answer questions and solicit feedback, and to brainstorm ideas together. And every meeting ends with me sharing that we have policy five zero one zero, parent engagement, and does anyone have any feedback to provide the policy committee, and this will also come up at the policy committee. This year, the feedback and questions from families, so this is this year's ideas for family engagement, this is a large lift. Families are, and children, we have lots of children attend these meetings. They're interested in pet therapy, animal activities, visits from the Audubon Society, Birds of Prey, game nights, robotics, art shows, movie nights, bike safety, a basketball event, America and Young Voices music show, a parent-student kickball game, drama drumming, and a teacher dunk booth, which was a very popular topic in the West School, and height making. We had questions around, this is the first year I had a lot of families ask about Title Four specifically, and could I tell them some more about how that money is used? And how can we do a better job of making, making sure that all funds are exhausted, especially late to art and music? I was asked how we can use title money to support book clubs with full setting and possibly rewards, that came up at two events. And then there was also a question that I would share to all of you around making sure that our playgrounds are ADA compliant, and how are we making sure that we're budgeting to prepare for that, which was actually, I thought, a great conversation, so. I, my responsibility is to report that these school-wide meetings happened, and as of tomorrow night at the high school, we have completed all of them. And that's the end of my superintendent's report for tonight.
Thank you, any other questions for?
Kind of general conceptual idea here, how much time of any of these people that are in these categories of social-emotional learning assistance is spent- is spent in training as a monitor as opposed to active service?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Do you mean, for example, like how much time does a school counselor? I'm just looking at mine, am I right? I just picked school. How much does the, how much time is spent training? And how much time is spent then actually in direct service to students?
Something like that.
Yeah. I think it depends on the role. Like if I look at, you know, Jessa and Val, because they are district level coaches, they do do more professional learning to larger groups, but that's part of their role and that's what's outlined in the grant investment. I also do know though, there is a balance then between meeting with an individual teacher and their group of students. And so when we get to the building level, so in here, if you saw a building level behavior coach, they're definitely spending, and remember, coaching is to support our good first instruction. So they're most likely in the classroom, especially in this case, doing classroom management with the teacher in partnership to make sure that we're, that they have a support, especially when we have so many new teachers.
Okay, moving into my report, so I do have some prepared words. As of late, I've been doing a lot, doing a lot of thinking and I've come to the realization that I'm probably not the right person to be leading the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union Board at this time. The volume of work and need required of me in this position is not something that I'm able to fulfill the quality that I expect of myself. In addition to the day-to-day, I believe this work involves the following. Establishment of overall goals for the SBSU with partnership to the boards therein. Board governance model of functional leadership as required to be in process by the state this coming July. District analysis for saving taxpayer dollars up to and including consolidation or other ways to make this SU more efficient. As the governor stated in his letter, that he would be looking to all of us to do. SBSU member board or SBSU overall restructuring to create an organization that is, that is efficient and meets today's need. I believe my ability or how I feel, at times my inability to spend the time needed to usher real change, is probably setting the board, administration, teachers and students back. This is something that I'm not okay with and is a source of disappointment for too many. We have major tasks before us and these will take considerable time to reach and execute. That time requirement is a source of overwhelm and is not something I feel confident about being able to accomplish. There's probably too many, there's probably somebody better to assume these challenges, identify solutions and take them to completion. I don't know the options from here, but my early read is that it would probably be best if I stepped aside and let others take over. If there are resources out there that can help us, us accomplish these tasks and if the board agrees to it, I'm happy to help. That said, I can't even devote the time to identify what those solutions may be, research them and come back to the board with what may be needed. I've been finding that even the simplest tasks take a tremendous amount of time because of the way this board is, the way this board and this organization is structured. And we need to be nimble, we need to be strategic, we need to have a five-year plan, a 10-year plan. That's what this board needs to be focused on. And I don't know how to change the mindset. And that is causing me to feel like I'm probably not the right person to be leading it at this time. So I'm willing to listen to ideas, may keep me in this role, but it is my, but this is my perspective at the time of delivering this message.
Thank you for your honesty.
I would say that what you're experiencing is the increase in board function that the state seems to feel is necessary. And I'm not sure the state has thought through that. I do understand your, the issue, but not, I've never been this board's chair, but certainly from my own perspective. At various times, there's a lot of work at times and at times there's not so much for me. But at this board, there's always work because it's 12, 12 months of the year. I think if you were willing to ask other members to step in and do, do certain things or do certain things with you, that might be helpful. And there are experienced people here. I'm not volunteering myself exactly.
I would say tap the very resource that, you know, first off, let me say that that's the last thing that I wanted to hear tonight. I think, you know, phenomenal job of navigating us, helping us, speaking well of the participation of all of the different members all along. And that itself is a task. To go to what I would say would be the best support, if that's what you wish, we would probably need to bring in the VSBA, which is Vermont School Board Association. And I'm sure they've seen this type of thing before.
They have resources.
I, there's, there's resources, there's interim, you know, and again, I'm not wanting this, but if we're talking about like if we need to identify some next steps, they're out there. I went through a whole SU.
And, yeah, and if I heard you correctly, you're, you're looking for us to help you, to, to help you with some of the workload. You're not ready to jump ship, that's how I heard it. And in doing so, perhaps there's a way to, because you don't have a vice chair. Or we have a vice chair or maybe there's another way to figure out the workload? Maybe it's not a vice, maybe it's co, maybe one does work this one. I don't know what the answer is. I'm just hoping that you'll continue in your current role.
Maybe if we had some subcommittees that have worked before.
Yeah, because I felt like, you know, subcommittee roles, which were beneficial in the past. They could take the load off. We used to have tech subcommittees, all the different side committees that no longer exist.
I like the idea of, of researching and potentially hiring outside help to look at this. Not, when I hear, when I hear subcommittees, I cringe a little bit just because I, I don't know whether, I, I would, I don't know what they would be working toward. And I think it's real, I think, I feel like the source of what we're wrong for me is that I often don't know what I'm working toward either, other than just to get through to the next meeting. And.
That's adding another task to the list of managing subcommittees.
Yeah, and I just, I don't, I don't see this, I don't see this organization going through a fundamental shift in the way it can, it can be thinking without having a plan that is, that is allowing us to all know what we're working toward. And I don't know how to get there. And, and I'm not, I'm not an education professional in the state of Vermont, I'm just an ordinary guy. So I don't know who the resources are, I don't know what it could look like. And that is, that's anxiety-producing for me because I suspect that it's happening elsewhere in the state, but I don't, I don't know. And so.
Scott and I spoke earlier today and to echo what you guys have said, I, I really hope that, I told him that I hope he doesn't step away at like his leadership style. I like what his vision is for getting this board as well as the member boards kind of out of the fray or out of the operation and to a more strategic level. I think that's a really, really hard move for boards to make. And Scott's been very committed to aligning the goals and, and having a vision and moving all of the boards forward. And that, you've done it well. I think you need, I think you need help, you just need help. And I told him, I've, I've been looking for projects, so the timing is. The timing could be good. You know, for Arlington, we did, we hired a consultant, not necessarily through the SBA. There are a lot of resources to help us draft a strategic plan. And I think that maybe the place for us to start is to figure out, are we all in alignment with what our priorities are? And then if so, once we figure out what those priorities are, then we can start. Because the list of what you have there won't be done in a year. That's, we can take steps towards it, but it's, it is a longer term, it's a three to five year plan. And getting some help to provide us with the path and then we can go do it. Like, but to come up with the strategic plan for the SBSU, which is an immense organization that's having a tremendous impact on this community. We, there is a cost to bring in that outside expertise, but I don't think we can make the monumental shifts that we're talking about making without it.
This wouldn't set a precedent in bringing in outside help. We've brought in, you know, people to assess building usage. We're bringing people to assess, you know, outside agencies. So I mean, this would, I, I wouldn't think that we'd be derelict in our duty in looking to help ourselves by bringing someone in to help provide guidance for us.
Yeah. That being said, we could add that to the next agenda, but we could not vote on something like that today. Because it's not on the agenda. We could certainly put that on as an alternative.
Yeah, I think we could have a conversation around what are the steps we need to take to start that action plan?
And at the end of the day, we'll respect whatever choice that you decide. Even if we.
We won't like it, but we're stretching.
I'll, I'll see it, I'll see it through the next meeting and I'll see how the conversation goes around, around bringing some outside help to really help us, help us be more efficient and nimble in the way I think today's student needs.
Well, do you want to put that as on an agenda item?
For the next, next meeting.
Yeah. I mean, is the question should the board just sit down as a board, you know, and just talk board issues versus superintendent, you know, supervisory issues? I think that's where the problem is right now. It's like, you know, what do we get to do as a board? We have to deal with our regular agenda. We can't have this in-depth conversation of, you know, what do we need to accomplish? What's our role as individuals in this board? And some of it might be, you know, these two board retreats. I just.
That that would all be part of whatever, if we hired the right consultant, that would all be part of whatever they work through with us.
Maybe it makes sense to kind of figure out the role of the board versus the day-to-day operations plus figuring out how to run a board.
I hope you're walking away with this understanding that this group is grateful for the work that you've done.
Yes, it's a significant amount of time.
And I think.
You've done it pretty well.
Yeah, if there's a job task you need help with, I think you can reach out.
It's the big, it's the, it's the big, big stuff that is so unwieldy, I can't even get my head around. You can't have that as well. And so that's where we need to get some help.
You know, it does seem like it'd be useful to have a group discussion of that and maybe it should be not, since there would be no action items in there. If we, we could do it as a retreat perhaps. I don't know exactly how you put that together, but I don't know if, if anybody's going to the VSBA conference. But there's usually not time. I don't know. Maybe there is time where you can.
My hope is that we would have, we would have that be part of whatever process we, the sport chooses to take. I don't know how it could look, let's not get into, does it need to be warned or not or does it need? That's, just, we will figure out a way to talk to one another, even if it is warned in public.
But I think you're, you're asking us to digest for tonight. We can reach out and formulate the plan for what the agenda item will be. Will it, or how will it be written?
Digest and feel free to, you know, really look, do, do some research as to how it's being, how it's being done in other areas, even how other SUs are structured and, you know, the, what are the more, what are the, what are, what are, what are boards doing? What are supervisory unions doing elsewhere in the state that we might be able to model? Because we're doing, in reality, a lot of what we're doing today and the way we're doing it from committees to boards are the same ways it was done many, many, many years ago. And a lot of things have changed in education since then. And I have to think we can be more innovative and more nimble and working toward a long-term focus, not just trying to get through the items on the next agenda. That's, we're never going to get change that way.
That, to say that though, implies that you have some, some conception of what you think needs to change.
I have some conception, but I, but I, but I can't get my, I can't get my head around how, how we would get it done. Because I don't, I don't know the steps to get it there.
Well, you know, first, first off, you have to have an idea that you want to go somewhere, even if you don't know exactly what it is. And then you could assemble steps. But you, you've got to have some an idea of a scenario where this, where you want to take, what direction you want to go anyway.
I, I.
That's, that's must be something naggy that you, that makes you feel uncomfortable with the whole process.
I'm, my hope would be that if we were to, if we were to find and agree that we've, that on the, the right consultant who could look at this from the, from the eyes of not just the vacuum that we're all currently sitting in, which is this, this district, these, this board, the boards we sit on, but this area, and expand our knowledge. I don't even know what I could, I don't even know what I, what, what is possible yet.
Well, you've spoken of your discomforts, but what do you think are the dysfunctions that you want to deal with?
I think it take, I think it's cumbersome. I think the, I feel like this, I feel like the, the, the process that we are all working in is cumbersome. I feel like it's huge. I feel like it's not streamlined. And I feel like it's making us not have a, have a hard time getting out of way, out of the way of the, the day-to-day and the minutia that we end up talking about at a lot of these meetings and never really looking at what, what is our vision for education in this town and in this community? And one year from now, three years from now, five years from now.
I think as, as elected representatives of our community, we have a responsibility to our taxpayers too, to assure them that we're providing the best education for the dollars that they're spending. And I've appreciated from the beginning of your kind of leadership is really looking at it, you know, how, how can we with confidence say to the community that we have the right structure and the right people? how, how can we with confidence say to the community that we have the right structure and the right people and the right places to provide for the needs of the students in our community? We have such a cumbersome organization that it's hard to be able to articulate that. And even if we walk away from a, a whatever, an analysis or a study or an overview or a five-year plan, and we walk away saying the structure that you have right now is the right structure, great. And we, we have done our due diligence to, to look at it and, you know, I think from what you've said, Scott, it's everything from to get a policy drafted, just hypothetically, it has to go through the policy committee and then each individual board, and then each individual board comes back and then comments go out.
We were just looking at policies tonight that were started in April. And we've got another one that I'm trying, that we're trying to get through that we're two months in already, and I don't see it happening for another two months at least. After it goes through all of the iterations, all of the people who have to put in their input, all of the boards who have to put in their input again. And the way the meetings overlap, you're looking at, you're looking at months before anything can get done, and it's.
Well, and so the meeting piece of it, for all of you.
Been a complaint for years and.
Exactly.
We've tried to streamline it at one time, some years back, and it's you know, one, one way to streamline a lot of these is just to adopt what model policies come out of A O E and the V S B A. But usually there's some need for tailoring. And that, that puts something into it. Now, you know, I haven't objected to policies in a long time because they don't really govern the system that I work in, because they don't apply to independence. They apply to public school.
I think lastly, the, the thing that I'd just like to, to say, just so it's on record, is the conversation that I had and the feelings that I have and the, with the size and scope of the organization and, and the need that I think it's going to take to help us be what I envision, and maybe what I envision is completely off, but the, is in no way should not be a reflection of the work that's being done in this building or in the buildings across this, this district. This is, this for me is a, is a, is, is a fundamental shift in thinking by those who are on these boards and those who are leading and, and how we can help make, make the lives of the people who are in this building and in the buildings that we support easier and better and provide safe and healthy environment for the students.
So can you articulate that in a short statement for the board for the next meeting?
What I just said? I'm not good at short statements, but I.
I don't care how long it is. Just can you articulate on paper and send it out?
The, the part about the administration or the part about what I'm doing?
But you just, you just hinted at an, at an idea of, of vision, so I want to see the vision. I don't think you expressed it completely. You just said that you think there, there is a need to have a vision that, well, you put the goal as basically facilitating the educators we have in doing their job better. But you know, there's a lot of law and a lot of regulation for pay-earliest in the way.
Yeah, but it, but one of the things like I think about how many times they're going to have to give this presentation to separate boards, and it's the exact same presentation. And is that the best use of their time? So if we could streamline processes in a way and have policies and accountabilities or whatever it is set up so that the, the people that we're hiring to do the critical work that needs to be done. You guys had asked like, how percentage of time of administration versus direct service? I look at their work the same way. How much of it is preparing to present to the board versus being able to deliver the service? And if we have a system that gets in the way of them being able to deliver the service, I think we owe it to them to figure out if we've got the right system. Because there's, there's a lot of money being spent on, on, I mean.
Streamlining the system.
And if we're bogging up their ability to do the work that they're hired to do, we need.
So would board, board and committee timing?
I don't know.
Any sort of precedence? Like if we have, you know, maybe a, a policy or finance or whatever the committee, this is over there. If three boards are together, so it can come from one room to another and it's faster.
I'd ask if you need three boards. Fair enough.
Barely staff three boarders in this.
Barely staff.
They're almost all the same people.
I think that's the kind of stuff a consultant can help us figure out. There's like board organization, there's S U operation and strategic planning in there, but really could do some good work around.
I mean, you could think about looking into policy governance approach, at least for this board.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's.
Well, you have to. Yeah, we have to be on that process. We have to be on that path by July of next, this year.
I think look back to, you know, is it worth that report? I mean, Arlington is the, you know, side by side kind of, which you have lost, but you know.
Is that a legal requirement that I, I guess, a new legal requirement that we go to policy government?
There's a governance standards that are, that's, that's what.
That's not, that's.
That's not specifically policy governance, no.
No, sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, governance, board governance. I like the, I like what was just said. I mean, the, it's really pillar, the three pillars are board organization, supervisor union operations, strategic planning. Those trickle down to providing a safe and healthy learning environment for our, for the, for the students and staff of the buildings within this district.
Yeah, there's also a plan for, you know, personnel turnover at the level of these top levels in the industry.
Yeah.
Which is not necessarily our plan, but it is something we need to be aware of. It's theoretically superintendent's responsibility, but one of those jobs is superintendent's. It would be nice to have a succession plan of sorts.
Well, and Scott and I.
It's part of S U, I would say that lumps into S supervisor union operations. But, but yes, I mean, and, and I think one of the most critical things for the whole, for the whole conversation is as part of the safe and healthy learn, learning environment is also retention across the district.
Yep. Retention.
Major, major issue that we have to work.
I mean, I look at the number of resignations and not retirements, resignations in these packets and I wonder, you know, what, what's going on? And then I was, you know, looking at today's pack, I, I mistakenly looked at the S D U E S D packet last week, last month. And that was instructive because I, I, I looked through the nominations and I, I saw really interesting group of people. And here, what we have today is we have some resignations and then hiring some people who are sort of at the, mostly at the lower end of our scale, you know, they're.
Starting here, yeah.
Right. And so their qualifications are they're not so much experienced, they're so. So.
Yeah, I mean, education's going through a bit of a crisis of being able to retain.
Yes, and it's the same crisis as a lot of industries are facing in terms of finding people. But hopefully that's going to settle out. And maybe, maybe there are ways we can as an S U, figure out how to settle that out locally. I don't know. We do provide a lot of the fresh development. A huge amount of it. It's very expensive and there's a huge amount of it and.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. I think the next item, my computer locked down. I think the next item on the agenda is other businesses, any other business?
I just wanted to say that I attended the V S B A regional meeting. Leon was the other attendee from our S U. They had a breakout portion, which was an election of V S B A representative. Jim Salzgiver is going to continue to fulfill that role. I know that down in this, say in this area, but I don't know how much interaction or knowledge of our V S B A representatives there is down here. And so we talked in the breakout section about how we can be doing more collectively, if we can look at Bennington County as a regional district and start talking together. One of the conversations was around Kathleen James, who has been one of our state representatives for Arlington. She and I have talked about trying to do with the Commission on the Future of Public Education. There's going to be a lot of information that comes out of that that will impact all of us in different ways, but maybe we start having regional meetings with reporting out on what that commission is, is doing, what the data is, how it might impact us. Trying to see if there's a way to function more as a as a county view and how do we make sure that we're providing, you know, what resources do we have collectively and what are the needs of the students collectively? B R S U and S B S U have made the function of separate worlds and maybe we can do more together.
Yeah, well, I think it would make sense if we actually had an intentional focus on what, at least following what they're doing. It's difficult to go to their meetings, although there, there will be one somewhere down here at some point.
The V S B A.
Mandated to meet in areas of the state.
No, that's what this meeting was. That was the regional meeting. And it was a remote, it was remote participation. So this was the regional meeting.
That was the commission?
Oh, no, sorry, the commission.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't think they've done, started up with those.
I don't think so.
Moving around the state.
No.
But.
Although the secretary of education is doing her listening tour.
Yeah.
So I'm hopeful, I don't know how receptive this, but I'm hopeful that we can start having some conversations and see how we can leverage our V S B A representatives to help support both of the groups.
Yeah, well, we, we used to have a member who was that representative and swear at the, we have six.
Any other, other business? Can we have our motions?
I'll make the motion.
If you have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most, any extension?